Good evening, welcome to the December 13th, 2016 meeting of the Middle School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. Roll call vote, I'll start from my left shot.
Here.
Denise is out this week, she's away on business. Nancy is here, Steve will relate.
Yeah.
We have teacher representative and student representative. Jody, anybody sign in for open session?
No, they have not.
Alright, we're gonna take a few things out of order, so we'll start actually with the student representatives.
So, the Winter Chorus and Band Concert is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Our last day of school before winter break is the 23rd. Taylor White is collecting shoes for her senior project and she's donating them to Souls for Souls. And for my senior project, I will be collecting books for a nonprofit organization called More Than Words and this book drive will begin after winter break.
I had some similar things. The football team though was at the Foxborough Stadium last night and they were able to participate in the flag ceremony and David has been honored with his coach beard, so he's gonna get to go to the Pro Bowl this winter. He's very excited.
Oh wow.
So that was good news for us. They had, we have several senior projects, there are books, the shoes being collected, the yearbook committee has sent me honey baked ham gift cards for Christmas at Lumberizer. And there is the concert tomorrow evening here at the auditorium.
Next little question, jump down to course form.
In your packets you have the agenda for our recent professional development meeting that was kind of modifying the Ed camp we identified with teachers in the professional development committee, the topics, and then people chose which topics they would like to go to, staff shared their expertise and strategies, the focus being on the growth mindset, interdisciplinary approaches and personalization, especially through technology, but not exclusively, and parenting community collaboration. So it was an excellent thing. You also have in your packet a letter from the Massachusetts School Library Association that is informing us that Patsy Diver, our librarian, has been chosen to serve as the Metro West area co-director on the executive board of the Massachusetts School Library Association, which is an honor, and Patsy works very hard and brings a lot of wonderful ideas forward, both in Milis and through the association.
I'll go to, I'll be my chair on the report. Last week Nancy and I met with Kathy LePlante, town accountant, the interim town administrator, Suzanne Kennedy, Jim McCaffrey from Board of Selectmen, as well as Peter Germain and Susan Beck from the Finance Committee, to discuss how we move forward with the bus lease and the articles associated. There's been some questions, there's some change in interpretation of how we can handle basically the balloon payment for the two buses at the end of the year. The money that had been put aside in the last two years through warrant articles that was, had been being carried over to allow for us to spend it at the end of the five year term to purchase the two buses is not being allowed, we're not being allowed to do it that way anymore. So we, so the money from those warrants was turned back to free cash. We discussed it with them and everyone at the end was in agreement that at the Springtown meeting there'll be an article that establishes some type of bus lease, or school bus transportation, or school bus stabilization fund in essence, which will allow for money to be put aside and held for future use. Board of Selectmen, Jim McCaffrey asked Suzanne Kennedy and Kathy to draft a letter summarizing what we agreed to so that it could be presented to the Board of Selectmen sooner than later, not next spring, but actually getting something on paper and an agreement now. What this will allow us to do is then take the money that was put into free cash and as long as town meeting approves it, put it into that stabilization fund, amount's about 23,000. And then we will discuss how we write a warrant article for bus leases this year. What we'll probably have to do is have one article that is just for the amount that would have to be paid this year, and then the amount that was, would have been set aside for balloon payment would be put into the stabilization fund. So this same amount would be allocated, but it would be in two different articles and so forth. It's unfortunate that we couldn't have gotten together with them in advance of November and done it, in my opinion, more cleanly, but we're getting to the right place. January school committee dates, I know there was an email sent out, I think people were okay with these dates, just let me know if or not. There's a elementary school building committee that is gonna be on the 3rd, so we're just adjutant partners to accommodate that, those are the two.
What are the date dates?
The 10th and the 24th.
Okay.
Alright, Nancy, can I have your board superintendent's report?
In your packets you have not only our current December enrollment update, but also the annual report we have from Nezdeck. Nezdeck does this enrollment study and based on Berthston Town, it parallels very much what the MSBA has said, which is that we are, we have, over the past five years declined in our enrollment by 142 students overall, which is about 10% across the district. Further on page three you'll see that in the next four years, we are, just based on Berthston Town slated to have 180 fewer students. Now, this does not take into account the housing starts, which is included on, about these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. We have building permits issued, which have been, in 2012 and 13, only five and seven building permits were issued during those years. So we're back up, the following, the past three years have been more closer to, well, this year it should be over 20, and in 2014 it was 27. So it is, we are hopeful that the enrollment will stabilize a little faster than what the projections show, but it is about a decline of 2.67% per year that is expected. And then it should, it should start to creep back up, I believe, it shows it flattening out. On page seven also you have the breakdown of, about three of our, 3% of our students in Milis choice out, but we gain about almost 6%, 5.7% choice in. We have 1.4% in out of district placements and, and then very few, I think, well, if you look at, also on page seven, the vocational and non-public schools, the private schools also have declined over the, down about 55% from the percentage that was going to private and down about 36% for the percentage that was going to the vocational schools. So we are retaining our students who live in town, but they're just, it's just a lower birth rate that is affecting us and the aging of the population, which is happening in many, many towns in Milis or in Metro West. Also in your packets, don't make me go ahead and do the kindergarten revolving, you have a memo regarding the kindergarten revolving account. We did the analysis of the kindergarten revolving account and the kindergarten program, and you know, the state did not fund the kindergarten grant, so we had to absorb into our school choice funds the salaries that have been coming out of the kindergarten grant. That was a loss of, I believe, 42,000 approximately. So those are now in choice and the kindergarten grant last year had a deficit of about, I'm sorry, not the kindergarten, that's the kindergarten revolving account of about 70,000, which we absorbed and did, chose not to increase tuitions because philosophically we want to keep our kindergarten program as inexpensive as possible so that ideally 100% of our students in Milis could afford to attend a full day kindergarten program. So if we were to continue, as I recommend in the memo, to take that amount of the, actually it's 48,000, the loss of the kindergarten grant, take that from choice, we will still have a decent balance, same choice at the end of the year, so I am not recommending increasing tuition in the kindergarten program this year. Since there is no change, there is no action required. I did also include the sliding scale, that even though we are not required to have a sliding scale because we no longer receive grant funds, I recommend that we continue with the sliding scale, which is determined by, and has been for years, by the guidelines at the State Department of Education for making kindergarten affordable according to income level of the family.
So caring losses for a couple of years, I think, for the kindergarten program, is it time for us to try and look ahead a few years again, as we did a few years ago, and I will jog in some more, find the choice. It's been a long time since we've had any kind of increase, I really don't want it to happen, but maybe we need to think a couple of years strategically, looking for, we've stacked enough, you know, reading, especially with that sort of thing, and just take it to the next level, think of it a little bit.
And the last time we did the analysis, which was a couple of years ago, our tuitions were well below surrounding communities and private kindergarten programs.
It's just maybe not real, that approach to the program in the next three years, three cycles. Given what we know about teacher salary increases, there may be adding costs over there, some space and inflation costs, some supplies and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think, I need to show, I mean, the biggest expectations of going into it, if we can, if we can, if we can get through this with nominal change, given that we're asking the council to draw in May, it's quite possible.
Oh right, it's just to look ahead to see what we need, and maybe it's three years down the road we need an increase, or we think we might, I don't know what state funding will come in, and maybe a grant will come back, we don't know.
We're right, we can only absorb this grant, probably for so long.
Just to be thinking about that. I'm not suggesting we have to increase at all, but maybe try and project when we might need one.
Mr. Chair. Because I think one of the things, in terms of staffing, when we get into the budget process this year, I think we've noticed it, we'll talk again in a few minutes about, you know, additional hours needed for a different role, having a conversation about what kind of staffing, we've noted a couple of times now, whether it's substitutes that we can't get and the other things that we should be or need to be looking at that we can benefit from, whether we can afford to do it in the short term or not, but at least we're letting for that.
This is preschool, if we look at preschool, I'm just seeing. Sorry, no, I was just thinking that our administrators could probably tell us, and Nancy obviously, but Thomas better than than we ourselves do, think of it, so this drives us to a new administrator meeting again. Is this budget cycle, or so, just look what they need.
First of all, I apologize for being late to the meeting, as I have previous, another committee. You kind of hit upon what I wanted to talk about, I, I think that we should be looking at the staff in that, in all three buildings, I think we should be looking at the staff in all departments, not just this individual, as part of, and I echo Miss Souls comments that we should be doing this with the administrators, looking at what we have authorized, what we have budgeted, what we should have, because, if you run back through the notes, we are, and part of this is because things change, but we add a point two here, a point five there, we have to add a new teacher, and that's fine, we do what we need to do, but if we could somehow get better at being strategic and projecting in a, in a way, or looking out further down the road, if we see a trend coming in with the enrollment, we're talking about enrollment, right, and so a trend may be going either way, so are we shifting FTS, do we have to bring FTS, so I echo the suggestion of me to look at this thing from scratch, from the bottom all the way to the top, and then build that into the budget process this year.
I was just gonna mention, you did talk about enrollment, it's projected to go down, but the way we spend money today, if we do it for your students, we might spend it, may not pay it, not on iPads, but on something else.
And maybe it's, just because enrollment's going down, you know, it's 2.1, the buildings we have, even building a new building, are crowded, so absorbing or reduction is not gonna mean all of a sudden we have a ton of empty rooms and an empty wing of kit, what it's gonna mean is, we're actually probably right sized for the buildings and infrastructure that we have, and may have. But what it would mean is, just because enrollment goes down, likewise, we shouldn't necessarily be looking to just potentially reduce staff because enrollment's down, it also may allow us to right side our staff, you know, and have things that, and have staff who can, who maybe actually have some capacity to do things that we're not able to do today, but we should be or would like to be doing, not having the bare minimum to do what we have to do. And that's, that's the next conversation, kind of really get into in the budget process is, we know we're doing what we have to do with a minimum amount of people and resources because that's what we have, of what you would be looking to try and get to.
Do we have, in these January meetings, do we have an administrator session scheduled or what?
We don't, but we could.
Second.
Maybe the 24th, if you double.
Sure.
Not right, yes, not right after the new year, but that'll allow us, that'll get, put it right into the budget process.
Especially if we're able to meet them this month, we'd have to catch up on business that first one, so.
Alright, I'll hold the action minutes till the end, so why don't we do, the technology that's here.
It always goes so fast, between the last time I was here and now, it's just feels like it's, I know, that must be it. So I wanted to talk about, we have a new website and we, it went live August 30th, and we're still working on some content migration, we have most of the stuff over, but it's probably the toughest part of the new website is, is for folks to get their content set. We migrated everything that was already on our old site, but there are places where we still need new content, and we're working with staff and administrators to get that to us so that we can post it. Training, that's where we're in the process of the fall, we've been training those folks that are gonna be updating the website, behind the scenes, our secretaries, our principals, and we have some additional training planned after the first of the year for other folks, our trainer, our athletic trainer, and some other folks that missed the training this fall. So I think we're in a pretty good shape, it's, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's a work in progress, I think we're further than that. And the other thing I should mention is, we have a parent, who's a middle school parent, who works looking at websites, this is what she does, and so she's agreeing to take a look at our website, and she's going to convene a small group of parents, and she's going to have feedback from them, you know, are these things that most parents are looking for, are they on the website, easily accessible, and so we'll be getting some input from that group, I expect, in the next few weeks, probably after the first of the year. So that's kind of our update on where we are on the website. I also wanted to mention that there are some features, some nice features on this website, it has a translator, multiple languages, and you know, we have quite a few ELL students and I'd say their languages are available on our website, so that's really nice for their parents and guardians and the students themselves that can go translate it and get the information. The website is a bit consistent compared to our old website, we've tried to make the websites of the schools, as well as the district, all have a similar look so that it's easy for parents, if they're moving from one school to another, they're not learning a whole new navigation, that if they expect to find lunches here, that is where they find lunches pretty much on all of them. And then another nice feature is, it's much easier backend for updates, it's very intuitive, and so when I talked about training on the previous slide, it isn't a whole lot of training, it all makes sense. Our other, our previous website was very, very cumbersome on the backend, it wasn't intuitive at all. And another nice feature of it is that the website adjusts to the size of device, if somebody's looking at it on their phone, or on an iPad, or a similar device, the website downsizes to the correct size. So, a mobile app, so this is in conjunction with the website, the vendor school messenger, who also does our robocalls, they offer this mobile app. This is gonna allow Nancy to push out emergency information, and in addition to that, on the mobile app with these nice little, like, I think right now I've got maybe 11 icons, I'm gonna show you a picture in a minute, you know, you can look at a calendar, you can look at the lunches, you can look at the athletics, there's a parent portal there. So even though the website, you know, kind of goes down to your phone size, you still have to navigate through pages, this mobile app, really it's just a button, and you go to that button, and so we're hoping this will be much more convenient for parents. And so this is what it will look like, I just, these are pictures from my iPhone, you know, this is, the front page of it, and I know it's a little bit small for you to read, but it has the calendar, schools, lunch menu, athletics, Twitter, YouTube, parents, and I'm gonna show you a few of them right now. So here we are, if we press the schools button, you can see that the middle slide, and I'm sure you can't read it from there, but it has most public schools and each of the schools listed below it, so you would click on that, and then over on the far right, if you click Clyde Brown, it gives you the main phone number, a link to the website, the Twitter account, and of course the street address in that case. So it's just a handy, a handy device. Lunch menus work similarly, you press the lunch menu on the far left screen, and you get a choice of the three schools, and I've given you an example on the right, on the 12, for having a grain pancakes for lunch at the high school. And so it comes right up and you can scroll through to see what the lunch is. Athletics, works similarly, signup forms, and at the very bottom is the schedule. So if you look at the right, and again, I'm sure, you know, for some reason, I think it was the, I took the picture on the iPhone, which is beautiful, but when I blew it up a little bit, it's a little out of focus here, but Medfield High School, you know, at Milis or at the other town. Parents button, the lunch payments, so this, the school takes them, the top one takes them to My School Bucks, the parent portal, which is the Power School, and then there's a school board one, which takes them to you guys, and I'll show you that at the end. So you can see what the My School Bucks payment page looks like right there on the phone. This is the parent portal on the left, and then on the right is the school board, that top one goes to our website page where it lists your names, the end of your term, and the dates of your meetings. And then, here we go, this is your actual school committee button, same thing, you can see the center one emulates the main page of the website, and then on the right are the meeting videos, you can watch the video on this as well. Alright, I'm off that topic, so at the end of the meeting, I'm going to show you, or tell you how you can get this mobile app right on your own iPhone or Android device, tonight or at your leisure. Help desk, so I think I had mentioned this at the last meeting that I came to, that we're thinking of getting a help desk. We were able to find a solution that's free, we haven't rolled it out yet, we've begun to roll it out, I've notified teachers that we're gonna have the help desk, and we're thinking that right after the first of the year, we're gonna try this, this will be a little bit of a culture shock, but I think it's really gonna help all of us. Everything will be centralized in a single location, we're gonna be able to track tickets so that we know what ones are closed, what ones are open, how long did it take to close a ticket, are we getting the same kinds of requests all the time, is there something therefore that we could do better, you know, so I think it's gonna help us be a little bit more efficient with our time. And again, we'll have some, it will have some reports, like, which will tell us the volume of what's going through our department as well. Oh, so celebrate, so I thought that before I get into the nitty gritty of leases and all of that, I would share with you some, some of what's going on at school with the devices, and thanks to the support of school committee and the community, all the things that we can do. I only, I only have three things, still, they're pretty, pretty special. So this is our robotics, on the right hand photo, you can see, that's the graphical programming language. On the right hand photo, you can see that's the graphical programming language through Lego Minestorms. And on the left is the robot dog that has lights and sounds that one of our students made. And she said that she was showing me that you can see the two green lights where the eyes are, and if you look on the right screen, you can see the two eyes where she can, you know, program both of them to light up at the same time, one, the left one, the right one, she can change the color, all of that. It's very, very cool. This is a robotic steam shovel that another student built and it's a little dark, you can't quite see that the steam shovel has, has a small disc and it's just the right size, that the, the arm is up in the left side picture and the steam shovel arm has come down in the right picture. And this, this particular student was also using a gyroscope sensor and that measured the rotation of the shovel piece. And so it can work all the motors that are on this and the sensors work in unison to have the shovel actually clamp and pick up the little toy. One of the things that, I didn't bring my, my notes I was going to tell you, so I'll just tell you, I'll explain the best I can. They're going to put another sensor on both the robot dog and on the steam shovel and another student, he didn't have his available for me to take a picture, but they want them all to not really fight, but to see who's strongest. So they're actually going to put a, an ultrasound sensor on and the ultrasound catches sound, it emits sound waves and then it reads the echoes to determine how close an object is to your device. And so they wouldn't bump into each other, or if you program it, they would bump into each other and one would capture the other. So the kids are, they're doing amazing things with the robotics. Their programming skills are phenomenal.
Is that a middle school page?
Oh, that's, actually, these are the high school, these are the high school students, right, that I was just showing you. This is middle school right here. This is Swift Playgrounds, which is brand new this year, a, a programming language from Apple and it is free and it's working on our iPads. It is, it's called Swift and Swift is the language a lot of the programmers at Apple use for their apps and various things. So our kids are learning that. It's a graphical interface, but I typed over it, but you can see on the right hand side, on the right hand side, you're looking at the world, if you will, that's, that's part of the programming world. And below it is the code, the actual, you know, turn left, turn right, do this. And what happens is there are some characters, the characters go through maze, you, you program the characters to go through mazes, pick up gems, go through portals. And again, you're creating a game, but you're learning a programming language at the same time and from a learning point of view, you know, there's logic, there's persistence, there is just the, you create an algorithm to start with, which is, you know, kind of math, you know, mathematical step by step procedure. So the kids have been really excited about it. You know, our eighth grade teacher has been using it for a couple of weeks now and she's amazed. I walked in and I mean, the room is silent, the kids are busy, you know, doing their programming, very engaged. We're going to use it in eighth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade. And our technology teacher in ninth grade will also use it this year. We're sharing some iPads because it does require the most recent iPad in order to, to install this. Pretty, it's pretty sophisticated. And then at Clyde Brown, you know, some of you, I don't know if you have students over at Clyde Brown, but Clyde Brown students went to Gillette for MasQ this year and these students are in fourth grade now, but this was a third grade program, project that they had, which I think, I saw at least one of you when I went to watch this in person over at Clyde Brown. So they research on Massachusetts landmark, they write a persuasive script on why, why you should visit it, and then they create images, composite images. So if you were, if your landmark was Paul Revere's house in the north end, you would have a picture of probably that, maybe the statue of Paul Revere, maybe a statue of the main road there that it's on, you would choose. And then, so those composite images kind of are the background. Then the students use a green screen and a green screen app called Do Ink and they are able to superimpose themselves. This is just like your weatherman does, you know, the map kind of had the picture in the background and then they superimpose themselves and the students describe the landmark and do the presentation piece of it. Very excited, so, you know, two cuties there with their name badges, pretty proud of themselves, and these two young ladies ready for the presentation at MasQ. And then in another amazing coincidence, this is the woman that is the app developer for Do Ink and she was there at MasQ and so she talked to the kids and she wanted to get their feedback for how she can improve that app. So I mean, I think that was really an amazing experience for the kids to meet one of the developers. So now I'm back to the more serious part of our discussion and I want to, you know, the infrastructure, which over the last few years, we paid, we, you know, spent some money to upgrade our infrastructure. We have the wireless access point, we've upgraded the switches, all the cabling, we have 300 up and 300 down, intranet speed. And as a consequence, our, our students and our teachers can really work pretty seamlessly with the technology that we have. I would say that wasn't true three years ago. We were having problems, you know, with connectivity, our network wasn't quite robust enough. And now we have pretty much everything in place that even though we continue to acquire new devices, they work seamlessly. I mean, we have an access point in every room. So that's the middle school, high school. You know, at Clyde Brown, we still have the arrays that we were using before, so those are older technology. We are going to take some of the arrays over our December break and put some more over at the, at Clyde Brown to improve their connectivity. Having said that, it's still older technology, so some of their older devices work fine, some of their new devices, the students are doing the same thing that the students did here. You've got to be near one of these to get that connectivity. So we're working on it, I mean, we're having a new building, we think so. It's, it's urgent, but at the same time, there's not a lot we can do, I don't think, before the new building comes. We're doing what we can. And that, the other piece of it is the cabling itself is older, older than even what was here. But, but thanks to all of these improvements and the financial resources that the town and school committee have provided, these, these critical upgrades have happened. Now we're up to the lease agreements, which again, you probably have to look at your handout to read. You know, so fiscal year 17, the last column, you know, it's at 69.9, the green in the center is year one of our brand new lease. And then every year, every year, we're either in year one, two, or three of a lease as you look down each column. And there's always a lease expiring, a final payment, a brand new lease, and then a year, a lease that we're in the middle of. Do you have any questions about that? Okay. I mean, you're seeing the same thing, you know, the numbers change a little bit. Our inventory is amazing. So each year we get new devices, but we of course repurpose the devices that, that are older and for the past two years now, our seniors have had iPads and when they graduated, we've taken those iPads and we've sent them over to Clyde Brown where they're used on a daily basis. You know, for a lot of the apps that our, our youngest students need, the iPad one and iPad two work perfectly fine. And so I would say, even though it's, you know, it's, it's just a great way of reusing the technology we have. We use it right till it, till it dies, until it won't work anymore. So, so we have a lot of iPads, almost 1,100 iPads. Our laptops are for teachers and other district personnel, desktops in our computer labs, libraries, classrooms. We changed out the, the computers in this library this year. We went from old Mac minis to IMAX and I think they're much happier with the performance. Students use these all the time. They're a little more powerful than the old Mac minis that were here and so I think that was a really important upgrade. Chromebooks, we have about 178 of them and some awarded, as I mentioned, from the merit grant. People repurchase some and then other people get them from different sources. So we're up to 175, 1750 devices, which is quite amazing for a small district like Millis. I mean, that.
Okay, okay, what do you, maybe you don't know how to number, but what, what is the optimal number? Like is, is 1758 where we need to be, do we need to be at 1,900? And what would the breakdown be?
Well, I think that, you know, with 1,700 devices, we're very close to a device for everybody, when you think about that. So I think that we're probably very close to the optimal number where we have essentially a device for every student. They may not all go home, but you know, our teachers are, I've been doing a listening tour and I, I've been at high school and middle school classes so far this fall and without fail, other than eighth grade, who does have enough devices for everybody, everybody else really feels they could use a device for each student. They're, they, they, they do their work almost exclusively on a device if they have one available. And one teacher was explaining to me that it's very difficult for her, she's a science teacher, and they share the devices in her grade level. And it isn't that she can't sign up for the devices, but in, over, she might plan the lesson and two weeks down the road is when she wants to use the devices. And she finds that, you know, maybe there was an assembly or something, for whatever reason, the schedule of her lesson planning is off a bit and she might need them two days later than she booked them. And, and now they're no longer available because somebody else booked them on that day. So she said, you know, it's frustrating, it's just frustrating that they feel so comfortable with the technology, the students love it, they feel that, you know, we're talking about personalizing learning and, you know, all our teachers are able to personalize instruction using technology. It's, learning is another, you know, powerful piece of software that our teachers use very well, again, to, to provide students with, you know, multi, multiple ways of accessing curriculum and students to be able to go back and review, you know, someone that needs to relook at something. So I would say we're close. The only thing I would say is, you know, devices become obsolete more quickly than ever before. And I say that, meaning this newest example with Swift Playgrounds, we would think that we have iPads that we bought two years ago, three years ago, that should be good enough, but they aren't good enough. On our, having said that, it doesn't mean we can't do anything with them. It just means that if we're going to push the envelope and, you know, our teachers are always looking for, you know, how can we do this better? What can we do more to challenge the students that need to be challenged and also, you know, address all the standards and, you know, the coding is a big deal right now that, that is in the science and the math frameworks. So, so I don't know that there's a magic number, but I think that we're in very, very good shape in terms of the number of devices we have. I mean, I don't want to talk you out of having new ones.
No, no, I, I, it wasn't a loaded question. But so, so really what it could come down to is maybe the number's not much bigger than that, but it's how they're used.
Yes, exactly, and how they're deployed.
So you did say, don't the ninth graders and tenth graders have take home?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. So that conversation was, they absolutely do.
Eight through 12.
Eight, eight through 12, take them home, yes. So when I spoke to the high school teachers, it was the ELA teachers in particular, they really prefer the Chromebooks. They have five of them, five Chromebooks that they share. It has an integrated keyboard, more and more of our teacher, you know, it's, we are in the midst of a transition that's happening, you know, we're in the middle of it and it's almost like we can't, we can see it happening and we're kind of reacting to it as it's happening. But our teachers have embraced Google. And when they embrace Google, so for our English teachers at the high school level, a student writes a composition and the teacher can sit there and go around the room, or at night, do this, go write in and edit using the editing feature in Google. And Google apps does work better on a Chrome device than it does on an iPad. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's, it's working better on the iPads over the last several years. I think it's working better, but it still isn't optimal. Whereas if you see the Chromebook, it's optimal. And then the other piece of it is the students prefer, if they're typing, you know, paper, to have an, a keyboard and it's integrated into the Chromebook where, where it's a virtual, more of a virtual keyboard on the, on the iPad. It's just a little harder to input their composition. So, so I should have, yes, so they definitely have a one-to-one there, but they're looking to say, well, maybe we could, instead of buying iPads for our students, could we buy some Chromebooks and see if we could integrate those and then maybe have a mix at this point. So it's a very fluid situation. I'm trying to go around and listen to our teachers, you know, what's working for you from a technology point of view, what isn't working, and try to bring that data back and then make a plan to work and have the best possible devices for our students and our teachers.
So when we started the one-to-one program, initially, this is a long, long time ago, a long before we were here, initially it was an iPad program and we purposely said, no, we're not going to call it an iPad program. It was a one-to-one program. And at that point in time, the iPad was the only thing.
It was, right.
It was nothing else. And it was the right thing to do. And now, technology has changed. I mean, you're the expert, the teachers are the experts, but I, I don't think we should be beholden to an iPad program. If it, if it works in the lower grades, that it's a more economical device and they can do everything they need for the lower grades on iPads, then that's fine. But Chromebooks in some other grades or in certain programs work better than iPads. It's, the focus was a device for every, every, every student and a device for every staff member. It looks like we're at that point now with the teachers.
I think we definitely are with the teachers. And again, even with the students, you know, we have a, a good amount of devices for everybody. And I do think, as you're mentioning, technology evolves, it never stands still. iPad was the only thing available in a tablet form, really powerful enough for school use, but now the Chromebook is just evolving into a less expensive device. It doesn't do everything that an iPad does, you know. You know, we have students, we do a tremendous amount of video work in this district, right from the elementary school right through seniors, and students use their iPads constantly for that. And they can edit on the iPad and again, this is, I mean, I'm walking down, down the hallways, kids are out videoing all the time. It's somehow many of them are presenting what they know to their teachers. So, and I'm not saying you can't, we did the Chromebooks, we purchased some of these Chromebooks this year and we did put a camera with a swivel on it and we're going to see how well that, it's not how well it works, but how well it lasts. If the swivel is something that, you know, little fingers, you know, break off, so far no problems. But the, the editing is nowhere near as good as if you're doing this on an iPad. So, so there's a trade-off and, and as you mentioned, it may be that we, we do a little of this and a little of that, that it meets certain teachers' needs in each of the, depending on the discipline that they're in. One of our high school science teachers uses the iPads and tell me if I'm repeating this, as, on a microscope. And so, you know, when, when I was in school, everybody had to look through the microscope and they would tell me, well, look for this, and I could never see it. You know, well, what this does is you take a single microscope, you put the slide underneath it, four iPads attach, and now on the iPad screen, you can see what's in that microscope. So when, when the student says, well, I don't see what, she can, you know, put her finger right there and you can look at it, so you're looking through the microscope on your iPad, something that the Chromebooks don't do. So I wouldn't say, I think we've kind of reached a point where we want to get the best tool for the situation and not hopefully be rigid and say, well, we can't do that. That sometimes the Chromebooks may just be a better solution in certain cases. And then, because I couldn't resist, I know this is not budget time, but I just had to put this in.
Always budget time when you talk to them.
Okay. Our 1,758 devices, you can see that line goes right up from, we have, we have 521 devices approximately in 2010 and here we are with, you know, three times as many. And then at the bottom, that yellow line, which does go up a smidgen from 2.5 FTE, FTE to 2.8 FTE, during that same period, our personnel has only gone up, you know, .3. And, you know, we're at the point where, I mentioned we have the help desk, we're trying to get some more efficiencies with the help desk and, but. And, but I'll be talking to you.
January twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Bring your staff in, your ideal staff in, not that we can necessarily do it, but...
Well, right, and of course then there's when Clyde Brown comes online, I want to talk about that, we have to put that on our radar, how are we going to handle that with the new building? And I'm sure they'll have an infusion of technology, not only what they have, but a new infusion of technology because of the building project. So again, I had to have that, I might bring it back. And then finally, for the local app, so all you're searching for when you go to do this is Nellis Public Schools, for Apple you go to the App Store, and Android you go to the Google Play Store, and it's really easy to download, it just does it and it, did you do it?
I did, yeah, it just took five seconds.
Right, it's very easy, but it's very handy. And so we'll have some promotional materials go out to parents, they provided us with some promotional materials, and so we'll send those out on our list source and we'll get that, the word out that this is available now.
Also, as we get into, when we do get into the budget process, I'm also interested in hearing more, hearing some options or potential scenarios of how we start to migrate from iPad to the Chromebooks or figure out, or hearing about how do we...
Yeah, how do you, how do you, you know, if you've got, okay, we need, iPads are best for, you know, video work and things like that, so, you know, in my mind, going through like, okay, well, are there classes where those work? So is it a scenario where we, kids have those specials for that semester, work off of an iPad and others work at, I don't know, I'm just, because, you know, unfortunately we're not going to get to a point where we're two-to-one. So how do we solve, and I don't want to say, and it doesn't sound like that right now the best solution is to go from one to the up. So how do we best utilize and look at how we do it well?
Yes, exactly.
You know, it's great, we're putting the little cameras on the Chromebooks, that just intuitively doesn't sound like it's going to be the, you know, best, safest solution of kids carrying that around the world. Camera on, unless it comes on, comes off and you've got a little case and they carry it around with them and that's how, that's how we do it.
But right.
If the iPads are getting that much better in dealing with Google, then, you know, is it, well, any year it'll be sufficient? I don't know. But that's, when we get into the budget, it'd be good to talk about that, just like Steve said, we're not, it's not an iPad program, it's a one-to-one program. So we just, we're open to hearing how we deal with the transition.
And that's a good point, you know, how would we transition this and make this happen so that we're making the best use of our funds and we can't, like you say, be a two-to-one, we still want to remain one-to-one. And so I have a few ideas, you know, how we can start this. And then I think it's going to be, it's going to kind of unfold over time as well, but we kind of put our feet in, you know, maybe trying a couple of small things to start with and then see what the response is and then move on. So we certainly will be prepared to talk to you about that the next time we meet.
I'd also be interested more, just so we can also be able to communicate this, when we talk about person, but I know you have mentioned we've rolled some of kids who have graduated over the last couple of years and we've moved those. It'd be interesting to know, like, some of those, you know, they might be going on at least four or five years. You know, the kids who graduated last year, we bought those when they were fresh.
So they're...
If they're the, if we're that far into this.
Was it two thousand and nine that we started the one-to-one?
No. No, the iPad was...
Ten, was it at least ten?
Maybe eleven.
Maybe eleven.
Two years in eighth grade. We'll research that.
Just to say, like, do we have, are we still using ones that we bought five years ago?
For the eighth grade.
Five or six.
The original ones that we purchased for grade eight, before I came, when the iPad initiative or the one-to-one initiative started, those iPad ones are Clyde Brown and they're being used. Now, again, each, each day, there might be one that, you know, kind of dies, but we are, they're using them at Clyde Brown until they die, literally, but yes.
To be able to say, you know, we bought them, you know, once, yes, we're buying, yes, they're a, they're a three-to-four-year, you know, useful life usually, but, just like everything else, we're using them into year five and six, to the extent that they can be used. And so, it was a sixty-five thousand dollar purchase when we did it that first time. Well, we didn't, it wasn't three years we got new stuff, it was six years.
Exactly.
It'd be interesting to see if the newer, the second or third generation lasting will be...
As long as the iPad ones, yeah, yeah.
That was the first generation, kind of.
It was, it was, it was. And I mean, actually, the teachers have no problem with the iPad ones as long as they're functioning. And again, most of them, the majority of them are, it doesn't have a camera. So that's their biggest disappointment is it doesn't have a camera. The iPad twos that they received from the seniors have cameras, so they're happier with that. But that's the only thing, and there's only a couple of apps really that don't run on the iPad one. Again, we're talking about the lower grades and some of those apps are just not that complex. They run on that first generation and the teachers are still using them. But, yeah, it's, we're very frugal in Nellis for sure. Yeah, isn't this...
And I just have to say, you know, Kay and her department, Dave Bush, Don Trail, Rich Knowles, they have done a tremendous job. So we have, you know, a new website, we have the new mobile app, we have efficiencies going on. She's still working on, you know, things like the, well, we're looking at subsoftware, we're looking at online paperless registration. There's a tremendous amount of work they're doing every day as well as keeping us all up and running and I appreciate it, I know everybody appreciates it.
Our department basically touches everybody in the district, every department, you know, from food services to operations, there's something. That's a challenge, we love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the action members, next. Consideration to approve the school committee minutes from November fifteenth.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the gift of piano valued at nineteen hundred and ninety dollars.
Mr. Chair, the, Mr. Hollis Plinton contacted us to offer us a piano, which is in very good shape. We checked with our music department, they went and looked at it, said we'd love to have it, it's fabulous and it is slated for Clyde Brown.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we accept the gift of a piano valued at nineteen hundred and ninety dollars.
The letter that we got here is nineteen hundred and ninety.
Up to two thousand. Up to two thousand. And we need to redo it?
No, I...
That's what I said.
Nineteen hundred and ninety dollars. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration to increase the board certified behavioral analyst position from point five to point six.
Mr. Chair, we ended last year, we have some additional students enter preschool and kindergarten, and with updated IEP meetings that have taken place in November, we do need to add a half day to the DCBA position to service all of the students and the requirements in the IEPs.
So my question is just, so we, do we know where the half day, so, I know because we have, we have worked into a split schedule, so, I guess I, personally, I just like, I'd like the committee to just know what that means, what this revised schedule is going to look like, just knowing, you know, now that we have three days and, no, I guess three and three.
Three and three, yes.
Yeah, two and two.
She will add the half a day on Monday that she was previously working a half a day.
This position is now that Monday, is it Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, yes. And the other ones?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, yes.
I guess this kind of just dovetails with the conversation that we had earlier, just things change, but it's one of those, you know, how do we, if we can absorb boldness in position and capacity, it is merely not even one, but just the general discussion of how we want that. Put this into that budget process kind of, it's kind of... So, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
So...
So, exactly, what are your discussion? Mr. Chair, building on what you said, I, when we go into this staffing discussion on January twenty-fourth, I would like to have a fairly thorough review of the staffing levels, specifically around SED over the last several years. You know, we're not, we don't come back and say we need a new first grade teacher or a second grade teacher or gym teacher. It's always been in this area that correctly can be in flux, but, you know, I had hesitations last year and I submitted the cuts, but I, this is not the first time that we've had to come back because things can change on a moment's notice. So a review over the last, at least three to four years, it'd be nice to do five, of just the staffing of, the staffing around SED and then based, and then from that, the kids who are in district versus out of district, just to kind of look at what does the faculty look like, what does the staff look like versus the amount of kids that were sent. And I know that that would require some work to go back in and kind of look at that, but I'm hoping because this is a pretty regulated part of our schools that we have the ability to pull that out and if we don't, we should have that ability, but it's also generally to afford to really, to look at things from a strategic way. And I know things can change, but when you look back three, four, or five years, you can start to see trends, you can start to see averages that'll give us the floor starting to look to make a cut or reduction when you have a good idea that hasn't worked out necessarily in the years past.
I think the question would be, how many do we, we can easily pull out all budget books and find out how many were in budget, how many did we end up with at the end of the year?
Sure, the added.
You know, it's, if we see that, you know, we've got years where we're continually adding, you know, point five or point one, and then the following budget, and then we start the year with that gone and we keep adding it back, then we kind of know we're, it's not really something that's going to go away permanently.
It's a little, it seems so, getting closer and closer to our point five to point six, but fortunately we've had staff, we've been able to tackle on the hours, but it's hard to hire point one.
Well, and that's, and we've had other positions where it is. It's very difficult to go find a point two something, you know? And you go to go find, I think, can you go find a point five?
Right.
Whatever. Doing that mid-year can be extremely difficult, finding somebody who has, who has the right skill set, quality person, who is looking for something point five.
And we have to provide services and if we can't find stuff, then we have to outsource it, it's more expensive.
And maybe that's one of the reasons why we don't let someone go invent or reduce hours at night and try to figure out where we can use that person. And I suspect that there's plenty of, or at least not for every single person, but I suspect with all of going out of these two buildings, that you can find a point two somewhere and try to put them in another position, so, but they're there. Because then we, then we are in a position where it's January, and we're trying to get one, that's just not going to happen. We should technically make it very good.
Mr. Chair, I'm also hopeful that by that meeting, we will have the Manus Dick Special Education Trends Report, because if you recall, when we have, when we get that, we have had, and of course, you know, the reductions we tend to make were as a result of just lack of revenue, lack of enough funding to keep personnel and we've cut expenses over the years and cut and cut and cut, so there was very little wiggle room anywhere in expenses. So the Special Education Trends Report is fascinating to look at because we have what seemed like a large increase in special education a year ago, year, two years ago, but it was actually just back up to the historic level and the previous two years had been nice and low. So that gives us a lot of good data and a historical look back on special education trends. If it is, I'll try to find out if we'll have it by that January twenty-fourth meeting, but it should be coming soon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And last action, any consideration to make a substitute custodian permanent?
We have employed on a part-time, very part-time basis about twelve to fifteen hours for we, Dale, who used to be a permanent full-time custodian, we have employed him pre-summer and into the fall utilizing our substitute custodian line item, and it is a position that we would like to make permanent. The Custodian Association would like us to make permanent rather than having it as a, as a person, non-permanent employee. The cost for twenty hours a week for the remainder of the school year would be eleven thousand six hundred, for fifteen hours per week for the remainder of the thirty weeks would be about eighty-seven hundred. We do, I believe, have plenty of cushion that we can absorb that into choice, and I would like to recommend that it be a position that can be each week between fifteen and twenty hours.
Mr. Chair, so I know his name and did he work for us in the lead?
Yes, he actually had a baby and has stayed home to do childcare for the baby and now is able to work part-time. And so it works perfectly. He's a fabulous employee, hard worker, always gave more hour, when he was full-time, gave more hours than he ever put in and we have noticed the improved, we started with a focus on Clyde Brown and a real deep clean around a lot of areas that needed it and we have noticed, I think that definitely this year with the new director of operations and Dale helping out, increasing cleanliness everywhere in the district.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve part-time permanent custodian up to two... Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve part-time permanent custodian up to twenty hours per week from now, for additional thirty weeks.
Second.
Move is second here? My only other additional comments are we're getting to the budget at night, getting this hot, of course. So, we've played it, you know, whether it's facility revolving or just the operating, don't budget, but, but... All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. There's no other business, no old or new business, no executive session, school committee announcements, Jeff?
So, I guess the one thing I've been holding last night, the town administrator streaming committee announced three names of individuals being considered now by the board selectmen to replace the former town administrator, Charlie Esquimal, and Suzanne Shanney, in term of position. So, three names, one individual is currently the town administrator from Harwich, one is a town administrator from Towne, Douglas, and the CFO of Towne, Hopkinton. All three candidates, and I don't think anyone would be grateful.
Who do they have in charge of?
I don't know when they're scheduling meetings, I'd like to interview them, they'll all be off-camera. I'm not sure if they'll be with the community forum, but if you met outside of just the board of select meetings, I'm not sure how that'll work.
I'm sorry, Jan, who, the CFO for what?
Hopkinton.
Oh, okay.
We started, there were seven, the call-in center helped with the actual resume collection and the initial vetting, there were about seventeen resumes, and it went down to eleven. We chose seven to interview, one of those individuals took a position with another town, so we actually interviewed six over two minutes. It was an interesting process.
Thanks.
The elementary school building community, communication committee, subcommittee had a meeting last week to plan out January through June around communication, community outreach, and the initial stages. But there's, there will be information coming, and there'll be plenty of opportunities and forums for people to learn about the school project. And we're quite honestly waiting for the final budget before we start going out to talk to people. Like, going out to talk to people prior to having a number, I don't think will be the best, we don't think will be the best choice. So, we're hoping to get that number in January, so, we're hoping at a minimum February first to get out, if we can get out a little bit earlier, we will. And then, just as a side note, not related to Millis, but related to schools, there was a threat, an arrest at Tri-County Regional High School today. And so, I found out about that from the news. And as a parent of a child who goes to Tri-County, where there was an arrest and there was a semi-lockdown, finding out about it from the news is not the right thing to do. And that's, we didn't make that mistake, but let that be a lesson to us that any information, even an email from the superintendent saying, "We had an incident in school today, the police were involved, more information will follow," would have been a good placeholder. And so, from a parent and from a school district, it's something to know that everyone was safe, no one got hurt, that's the good news. The bad news is to find out about it on Fox News, that's just not, it's not a good situation. So, we have done a good job in this district communicating. In fact, we had a report where we were able to go to the board of selectmen and explain to them that we did a good job when the first day of school last year. So, I guess, we should continue that and look to see others and say, "God, it's not us."
I wanted to congratulate the Millis football team. Joyable run, I coached a lot of these kids since they were knee-high, and these young men did a tremendous job. It was a joy, other than the sun coming over two-thirty last night after going to the Patriots game. It was a great ride, they truly worked as a team, and the whole team, coaching staff worked well together. And they were really epitome of a strong unit. It was a joy to see each one of them picking each other up when there was injuries and just encouraging. And I couldn't say, a better group of young men, just a pure joy to watch it, and it was, it was nice.
Will you be inviting them?
Yeah, and I'm...
We'd have rooms. Could have to have in the auditorium, I mean, and we're not Gillette, but, you know?
And tonight, on the heels of the Patriots game, you know, January, I thought would be nice, as soon as we get back to that January, well, it's now January tenth, I'll reach out, because it's true. It was a wonderful season, and to be honored as coach of the year by the Patriots for Dana Olson and his tremendous group of coaches that worked with him. They all, and Bob Mullany's fond of saying, "The relationships of the adults in the building," or the other way around, "The students' relationships and how they, how they treat each other is a reflection of how the adults in the community in the building act toward each other." And I think that that's true, the staff, that coaching staff is exemplary.
Well, I think it's best epitomized by, there's a recent death of Coach Crady. And after they had won, they went to the grave site and placed the statue, the award, the championship.
Trophy, yes.
On, on the graves.
Ah, yeah.
And it was quite touching, I mean, they were all touched by it. They learned about his death, the second to last game, and they went out and they performed admirably. So, I think they all had his spirit quite along with them, and it was a nice, nice paying tribute to him.
Mr. Chair.
The news, second here? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.